All right, we'll call a meeting to order at six thirty-three. I do not have the agenda in front of me, but we start with a roll call.
No, we don't have the roll call. I think we start.
Perfect. All right, call the order and we'll prove the agenda. Did everybody a chance to look at this agenda?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna motion to approve it.
I so move.
You.
And I'll second.
Linda, thank you. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
In unanimous.
Oh wait, somebody's online?
Yeah, Matt.
Yeah.
Yeah, hi, hello, everyone.
Hi, Matt.
Hey, Matt. All right, so and let's move on to discussing the minutes from the June twenty-sixth meeting. Any edits or objections to the minutes, otherwise can you motion to approve them?
I'll move to a person.
Thank you, thank you, Emily. All those in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Thanks, Matt, unanimous, okay. Public comments?
No public.
No public. Moving along, so we're gonna review this boundary line adjustment.
Yeah, that's.
Or this, not this one.
Not that one.
Not that.
If you've signed that, I'll say that. So what we're gonna do tonight is just a quick corrective action. Back in two thousand and four, a boundary line adjustment was approved by the DRB and signed by the DRB. And then the landowners and their surveyor went ahead and recorded a small revision to that. That revision, and I have the sort of background maps here. This is on Olcott Road.
Off the.
And you'll see, you'll see there's a hatched in small area. Okay, so the original, the, this, this is the flat that was recorded. You can see it's signed.
Yep.
Had that little portion of land, which is going to lot two. Then they subsequently recorded that same area, no changes to the geography, going to lot one. So you know, everybody agreed with it, it's a minimalist, de minimis change. But the land record is out of date and our tax map is incorrect. So I had the applicant maybe it's the old men talk, so I had two surveyors who did this agree to produce a Mylar and have the other one stamp it. Cause he was the surveyor of record at the time.
Gosh.
So we just need to sign this Mylar, which represents the two thousand and five.
This one?
Yeah.
Did our board approve this in two thousand and four?
Yes.
And then they just recorded this?
There was no further action after two thousand and four by the board, but they just went ahead and recorded.
So we.
And so the property's deeds are correct, it references the two thousand and five flats, but it's never reported. And therefore not in the taxes.
And so we basically are mending our two thousand and four decision?
Um, sorry, Matt, we'll get any questions, you have one second.
Sorry, all right.
Yeah, no problem.
No decision with the boundary line adjustment, it's an administrative.
Okay.
So essentially, the.
We are mending that approval, that, that, okay.
Great, so which? This hashed area?
Yes.
Is this in lot two or lot one?
Lot one.
It belongs in lot one.
The about, the two thousand and four boundary line adjustment was made with the hatched area in lot two. But they recorded it in lot one and they want it in lot one. And we are now gonna sign this to say, yes, it's part of lot one.
That's right.
Gotcha.
Okay.
May I just ask one other question, so and so this hashed thing is always there. And so it looks very logically like with that straight line, it looks like it's part of this lot. But so at originally, the decision was a weird shaped.
Yeah, there's a story there. So there's a historical barn and that, that act, that portion of lot one now has a covenant in its deeds describing the use of that little section. So.
And I'm just, so it seems like making us giving our blessing to this change seems all fine, it's on all kosher, et cetera.
Is there a little cemetery here or not?
I think there's one near, yeah, one nearby.
I do have this question, is it, it's a failure on the owner's part to not have followed up and filed things? Or is a failure on the surveyor's part? I'm just, can't help but ask that question.
Who's fault was?
Yeah.
It was, it was these surveyors. I mean, and the, and the owners, the owner applicants.
Yeah, they didn't pay, like, what do they know? Nobody.
Yeah.
All right, fixing things up.
Lot one is one owner's property and lot two is another property, or is it all?
It's, they're in separate owners.
Separage, okay, great, that's what.
And if all the owners are happy with things as we are about to bless them, right?
Yeah.
We can do a good deed right here and now.
I like that, and it was caused because of the current tax.
Well, the, the current owner is in the.
Process of trying to.
Trying to sell. And so anywhere you look on the parcel map in the state of Vermont,
Yeah.
the representation is wrong.
Yes, that's why I thought of.
And also, you know, it's a slight cloud on the title because you know, the D referencing unapproved plat.
Well, it just makes sense to correct it and make sure.
Basically, so no shenanigans have been going on.
You said everywhere they look on the, on the what, the parcel maps?
Yeah, any, so all of, all of our tax maps in the state of Vermont are sort of bubbled up to a central database and that populates all of the, like, the A and R, the parcel viewer, real estate databases.
It's up to date.
And is that?
Yeah, we, we were almost four years out of date, but we updated it this year, so we're back.
And you were saying, would it, would it have drawn from this? Or whatever, it would.
Yeah. So the, the way that those maps are updated, it, you know, we, all of the subdivisions that happen a year, in a year, someone will come and collect them, scan them.
Okay.
And then updated, because this wasn't signed, it didn't appear to them.
Which wasn't signed?
Uh, the two thousand and five. The.
The Mylar?
The change.
Got it.
Yeah.
Um, sorry, Matt.
Yeah, so I have, I guess, two things, so if there was no money exchanged, but property changed hands, would there be a property transfer tax that would need to be paid, or is that not our concern? And I guess this would be adverse possession anyway, cause it's been twenty-one years.
We said there was a covenant anyway in the lot one.
Yeah.
To that property anyway.
Yeah, and the, the title and deed were referred to the two thousand and five revision. So I don't know if there's property tax transfer that's involved in this, and it is also not our concern.
Okay.
Crystal clear?
Clear enough.
Clear mod.
Need a motion from us to, like, to do so?
Let's, let's do that.
What is the language of the motion? Okay, is it, is it, it's not here?
Can't find where I'm supposed to sign.
Oh.
Oh, is there no signature block? Jerks, just sign it.
I will. That's not coming back.
We have to make a motion.
Now, we definitely have to make a, probably need to. Let's be honest.
That's right. How many people?
Um, what kind of a motion, so we want to approve the boundary line adjustment number, blah, 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 to correct an error in the land record, is that what we wanna do? Like, just going from the agenda item.
Yeah, how about authorize the zoning administrator to for record a Mylar correcting.
Boundary line? This is a this, cause this one's a subdivision, so I'm gonna say boundary line depicted, boundary line adjustment.
Well, write it, write it down to the, then we'll just say what he said.
Motion to authorize Z A to record Mylar correcting error in BLA, whatever it is.
Yeah, it says hashtag eight-six BLA oh three, yeah.
Or eighty-six action of two thousand and three, you guys are lucky.
Wait, that's what that means?
Really?
Eighty-six?
Yeah. Yeah, not by the DRB, but, yeah, yeah, you guys would never leave.
Our lane was good.
You weren't even born yet.
Oh, say yes.
I was one.
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
Okay, so I so move. And somebody second?
A second.
All those in fair?
Hi.
Thank you, Matt, unanimous.
Unanimous, great.
All right, now, we can do this.
Yes, okay, thanks for that, let me clear the table later.
And just for my own curiosity, the Mylar.
Yeah. Yeah.
No, no, I need to make up some language here, right?
Yeah.
So I'm gonna do.
Oh, where did the other? The one that had a space for you.
Yeah, it's, there's a little, there's a little bit of a.
There's a slight difference, so.
Instead of, that talks about subdivision. This boundary line adjustment.
Depicted on this plat was duly approved as conditioned by the Norwich Development Review Board in accordance with the Norwich subdivision.
Oh, wait, go into fast.
I'm gonna say the boundary line.
Do you need the number yet, or?
Uh, what is, was approved?
Was it, was duly approved?
Approved.
On the.
By the, by the Norwich Development Review Board.
Yeah.
Approved by the Norwich.
Development Review Board.
You want the date? Is it on, right?
Do you wanna do the in accordance with portion?
In accordance with like what, TSA somewhere?
No, in accordance with the Norwich subdivision regulations and all other applicable laws and regulations.
I would just say.
That's just how, that's we always.
Yeah, no, yeah.
Yeah.
That's understood.
In accordance with.
It's understood, okay, was it, was it approved by the DRB on?
On, like, today, yeah.
The.
Let's say, yeah, two thousand and twenty-five.
Day of September.
Do you remember?
Yeah.
Twenty twenty-five.
Twenty first.
The parentheses, sub boundary line adjustment permit.
Oh, here, want the number?
Yes, please.
So it's, it's number eight-six BLA oh three.
No, it'd just be LA oh three, no hyphen in it?
Yeah, none on.
Eighty-six BLA twenty, uh, oh three.
All right, beautiful, I'm gonna send Patrick really share, is that what it's called?
Yep. Yeah, by the way.
All right, just that.
Are you ready?
Yes, we have fifteen minutes left, you guys, let's go.
And you should do a little happy face. I have a heart with both the eyes and the nose.
Don't tempt me. Don't encourage this guy.
Do we need a blotting?
No.
It's sort of our last.
Do you have a stand for that stand?
Thank you for understanding, while you're.
Never take it out of bed.
Patrick, I've got two more things for you.
Your hand's gonna get tired today.
Um, so you guys remember back in May, we approved the rules of procedure in conflict of interest policy?
Yes, yes.
Um, I would like you to sign it. You know what, I don't have a signature box here, so let's this is a comment, dude, this is trouble.
Guys, we're unbound by the conflicts of interest rules right now.
I feel like this is, we can do this.
Okay.
I mean, on behalf, on behalf of the.
Norwich Development Review Boards.
Let's go with the, yeah. And we did, we unanimously agreed to this?
Yes.
As if we're gonna reference that date and pass or not? Today is good.
I think you just sign your name.
I think you can just sign your name.
Sign your name, say chair.
Just say chair.
DRB and today's date.
Yeah.
Look at that.
Nice.
A flourish, the chair. And?
Uh, eighteen?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. The next.
They draw a little doodle.
You must, you must. Thank you for that. I can now put that up on the website. Or else.
I never draw anything that's on my signature.
We have a consolidated.
Don't draw that.
Um, it's just. Liberty's not illegal.
Yeah.
We're not violating the open law, anything we didn't want.
So. For another two months.
Can't cancel.
We have a, the, the town has a consolidated document of ordinances for a variety, all our, all our ordinances. However, it has a error in it that I have written a letter to the select board asking them to correct. The, it also contains the land use regulations and the subdivision regulations, which are now moved in that document or out of date, so with your blessing, this is the letter that I would like to be sent.
All right, dear Mary and members of the select board, the DRB would like the select board to take action to correct the mechanical deficiency in the town ordinance document at such and such places of the private road specifications, blah, 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 found here. The document refers to the planning commission, this should be the development review board. Okay. Second, just take power back, the whole part two.
It just lets.
Could be removed and replaced. Yeah, two copies.
Uh, no, just one of its own.
And how did this come to your attention?
Um, I was reviewing the, the, if we have a process to convert a driveway to a private we sort of E nine-one-one addressing regulations and our private road specifications say that if you have more than three residences served by a single driveway, it needs to become a private road.
More than three?
Yeah.
Who, wait.
But we're already there. No, I was thinking about that, well, the next one up.
Our town.
Or that lady that watched her dog.
Yes.
I'm over it.
Yeah. So.
I even wave half the time.
A little neighborhood disagreement going on here, or?
That little pond thing where Doug Kennedy used to live.
Oh, yeah.
Three, there's three there.
Okay.
Right up.
That's all I wanted to, that's all the sort of signatory stuff. Um, I did want to sort of touch briefly on the two upcoming matters. Next month, there well, one's the farmer's market, so.
Ooh, that's biggie.
It's a biggie, it's a large commercial matter.
So. That's the one on the sixteenth, is that right?
Yeah.
I'm gonna miss that one.
Yeah.
We're out of town.
Well played.
Now, I'm just, I.
I know, I like, I like that one.
You know, this is not really the forum to talk about it, but I just wanted to sort of bring you guys into the picture a little bit, cause there's a lot of components. So.
And this is because they have an actual plan for what they'd like to build there? Is that the end?
Yeah, this is it, so the hearing is going to be a conditional use hearing as well as site plan review. So it's worth seven thousand square foot.
Does site plan review is different than development envelope review?
Yes. And it's different from conditional use.
Yeah, okay, that one I sort of know in my mind is.
Site plan.
Conditional use is like, it's not, it's kind of an, an, it's like an exceptional use for the property.
Yeah.
Site plan, where's that from?
That's really to look.
Lifespan.
The, well, I mean.
Do they need a development envelope or not?
I'm, I'm just gonna hand wave that.
Okay.
You know, I think it's, it's, cause the, the whole thrust of site plan review is to look at the proposed development.
Okay.
So.
Got it.
Presumes.
So, all right, okay, fair enough.
Okay, so just to sort, I, I, I don't have a large overview.
Is, is this thing here, that thing there?
Um, okay, so no. So here's the structure. And then this is the area to the south of it, where they're going to have vendor stalls.
And where is Route five?
Route five is here.
Okay, and where they are right now is.
Opposite side.
Is kind of there, or like a little further?
It's sort of like over here.
Okay.
Over here.
Yeah.
That's not directly across the street, so as you guys can see here, I mean, it's a sort of a high level, there's a lot, there's a lot of improvement that's proposed. This is sort of extra parking.
Of all these maps, this is, this one is the one that shows Route five north.
Right.
Entry point.
Yeah.
What, what is this showing, this is like a more a close up?
This is, this is, this is the building. So that's sort of that part and up, and all the sort of improved parking, paved parking.
They're building like a, like a building.
Yeah, seven thousand square.
What, what's closest to this, is this like a?
No, there's nothing.
Yeah.
No, no.
Type of building, yeah.
Being Arthur.
Fog's hardware.
Not in terms of proximity, in terms of, is this like a driveway style, this building?
Is this open, like it has no walls?
They're like closed or, yeah.
Yeah, or is it just a ceiling and?
They're a four season, like real building.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it is, it's.
It's got walls and doors.
Yeah, it's got walls, doors, windows, there will be sort of vendor retail inside.
Cause you're gonna do it in the winter.
Yeah. Yeah.
Sorry, has the organization purchased the land, so it is the Norwich Farmer's Market property now?
Upper Valley Agricultural Association.
Some organization.
I'm not, I'm not, they have a purchase and sale agreement.
Uh, and maybe it's contingent on this kind of permitting, right, do you think?
Kind of like chicken and egg.
Well, is this right? Yeah.
Part of their application is a letter from the landowner authorizing.
Yeah.
But I thought everything on that side of Route five was not, was not zoned for this stuff.
They're applying for an open air market. Which is a.
But that's what you said, a big building.
Open air market is a technical term.
I bet.
For retail space that has a variety of different vendors, but not individual stores.
So the open air does not mean it's open to the outside air, it just means within the building.
Yeah.
It's open to everything, like it's not made.
So there's so there's commerce that's happening at this place but is not deemed commercial development?
That's a good way of putting it.
I'm not, yeah, yeah, interesting.
What's, what's it John for?
It's a.
Rural residential.
No, 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 and now they made this change, the new.
It's still rural residential.
Yeah.
But open air markets are conditional in any district.
And that's, that's a recent change.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's how they can say this is what we want to do, because zoning wise, they are blessed to do that, because it's conditional use with our.
Yeah, but I'm not, yeah. This is.
Is anything, is anything conditional anywhere, like, could we approve a commercial development there if there were no objections and we all voted for it?
With the new, yes, in a sense, are the new, uh, land use regulations have a category of other. So if somebody comes comes to us with a use that's not explicitly listed for the district, we can consider it similarity to, you know, sort of the purpose of the district, et cetera. Um, so I don't really want to talk in depth.
Yeah, yeah.
No, but they're saying.
Well, I'm, I'm already feeling, again, we're, this is, we're being recorded right now.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to bring to your attention.
Yes.
Uh, if you, if you guys have individually questions, you know, you can feel free to send them to me and.
Isn't there, this isn't a site, sorry.
Yeah, well, that site visit was my question, cause you, in our emails about scheduling, you've mentioned a site visit, is it for this?
No, it is not.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah, I, I, I'm presuming familiarity for a pretty nondescript site.
Yeah.
So the question, is this in agreement with the Norwich Planning Commission?
Well, they made the changes.
Yeah, legislation body approved all of the.
They approved, as you know, the.
Right.
Like, they didn't.
Policy area and the select board, so.
Well, that's great.
It's all, it's all up and up. Um, but there you have it, it's.
Yeah, but now it comes to us to look at the specifics of an actual proposal to say, oh, yeah, this is fit, and we can ask lots of questions.
Now, I have updated all of our links to the new subdivision regulations, so if you guys have local copies.
Yeah.
You probably want to.
And just look at the.
Yeah.
If I were able to zoom in to this, like last minute, do I, is that okay?
Of course.
Okay. I don't have to, I don't have to link, okay.
But you're talking about which, sorry, this is.
This is the sixteen, you should put me, it's not coming, but if I show up, I still get.
The next thing is the, the second, what's, is the second?
There's, there's nothing happening on the session.
Oh, okay, okay.
So I, I, you know, I apologize for all of the sort of back and forth. Um, and you know, I found out that the applicant first was really wanting the second and then like eight hours later was, no, it's fine, we don't need to do that, so rather than spam you guys some more.
Again, what's the date for this?
October sixteen.
Sixteen, okay, fine.
So that's an attached event.
Yeah.
Next one is the sixteenth, okay.
Yeah, and we can always open the hearing, take testimony.
So we still need to do a site visit, but.
Or for the next applica, application, the, the next hearing, we're gonna have that night as well, so we're gonna do two hearings that night.
Oh, okay.
So.
And one of them will require a site visit.
Yes.
There's stuff there to look at, whereas here, it's just the open field. There's stuff there to look at, whereas here, it's just the open field.
Right.
So we're planning, we're planning the farmer's market and another case on the same night?
And a site visit.
That afternoon?
I uh, I'm curious if we'll be able to resolve both of those in one night. Just, just my personal thought.
Fresh deliberations, so.
Well, wait, no, we we don't have to decide everything, but we just have to have a hearing.
You have to open the hearings.
Yeah, we can still talk about it and then.
We got what, thirty days to attend?
Forty-five, it's been closed.
So. What's this, what's the other matter?
It's a development envelope review for a undeveloped piece of land on Dutton Hill.
Okay.
And the real. Kicker there is um. The sort of. Limited amount of development space that they have, so this is, this is a elevation model.
How far up that hill do you?
Um, do you guys know where the um fire district um property is? It's directly across the street from that.
Oh.
So this is a third of an acre.
A third of an acre, what?
The, the whole property is four acres. And as you can see, there is a significant amount of slope here.
Yeah.
So, um. That's why a site visit, I think, is a good idea too.
Although, compared to that, it's pretty, yeah.
Do you have, do you have an address? Do you have an address for that, just so I can look at a map when you guys are looking at it?
And I just um Google one hundred Dutton Hill and it's across the.
Okay, thanks.
Um.
So this application is gonna come with uh three geotechnical reports.
Oh.
Um, I don't expect that, uh, you know, I certainly don't understand the merits of it, but they put a lot of work into it. Um, but, you know, this is.
These are, these colors represent steepness?
Slope, yes.
And do you know what percentage slope?
Yeah, everything that's purple is over twenty-five percent.
Okay.
Or twenty-five percent or more.
Right.
Um, so it's a tiny development envelope.
Doesn't have to be at least two acres?
No. No, the, the, two acres is our zoom size.
Okay.
Yeah, and I mean, that's the question, you know, I don't, the regulations are silent on the size of a development envelope review, review.
Okay.
Envelope.
So, and and questions like. Uh, whether they can build a septic system there, like they've already answered that.
They, they've gone through sort of significant engineering studies already. So, yeah, there is septic capacity. But anyway, so this is gonna be on that night.
And so what's the timing, like, uh, cause by October, like, what, we would do the site visit first and then, right? While it's light, and then do, have you set a time?
Well, I, I wanted to speak to you guys.
Okay.
Um, I don't think it will take long, so I don't think we would need an hour.
I would think it would need to be at least about five o'clock, because by.
Yeah, like, yeah.
I mean, it's already dropping.
Here, we can look up.
At seven o'clock now, it's.
Yeah.
Dark.
Yeah, I I was.
So Steve. I I have a question, which may be more properly answered now, rather than in front of them at the site visit, so when concerning steep slopes. Assuming the driveway meets the specs and the septic is approved and it's not ridgeline. Why do we care about the slopes or what should we consider, if you get what I'm asking?
Um, it's. No, I do get what you're asking, that, that's a, that's a good question, and you know, I, I don't want to give you the answer to that. But that's.
Okay.
That's the question you have to answer, do you care? But it is.
Okay, okay.
It's, it it it's a tiny footprint for improvements. And there's. No real room for error.
Is there already a dwelling on this property or this would be the first?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's completely undeveloped.
Okay, the steep slope goes down and then eh?
Yes.
The river.
Yeah. And you know, the geotechnical report shows, you know, some faults. I don't know.
Yeah. So out of the four acres. It's just point three. Point three?
Yeah.
That is feasible to build on.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I guess the question is, is. Three acres feasible?
Where's the part that, where's Beamer?
Right.
Down, well, it's um, if you look.
Like, this is brag, this is brag hill, so it's down, down that way, yeah.
Yeah, got it, so this is the part of Dutton, this is the, the early part?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and it's on all of us.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, I have curiosity, how, I mean, how does a lot get created in the first place without a development envelope? And like?
Oh, this is, this is probably created years ago.
Before they even did, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause you don't need a development envelope, cause it could just be for logging, for example.
Right, uh, yeah, yeah, um.
But every time you subdivide, you have to have one, right?
Well, yeah, and that's.
That was sort of my question, cause every time we've done a subdivision or a boundary line adjustment, it's like coming.
Yeah, that's sort of. Relatively new.
Okay.
Uh, process.
Right.
And, you know, actually that, even if, even if you're. You know, proposing no development. We'd still have to, you know, somehow waive the requirement for a development envelope review.
Interesting, okay.
Yeah, if you, if you're subdividing, I mean, and that's the only way to make.
Or, or if you're proposing improving an undeveloped lot.
Right, but the whole town has lots, there's no like unlotted. Lot of town, so like, the only way to make a new lot now is to subdivide.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, and the rule says when you subdivide, you have to have a development envelope, or we waive that, so this must have been before that.
Yes, yeah, absolutely. And there are many, many, many lots that do not have.
In terms of timing, we'd like to have the meeting part that would happen here by six thirty.
Yeah.
And and I'm thinking sunset or is around six. Right then, so we, how long will it take us to walk around there?
Uh.
Like, do you think?
Fifteen minutes.
Oh.
I mean, it's, it's really a tiny area.
It's very small.
It's very small.
I say five fifteen.
Five fifteenth?
Alright.
Okay.
Well, tentatively, let's check our calendar.
That was good to me, okay.
Do you guys even feel a site visit is necessary?
Uh, I mean, we could go ourselves.
Oh, yeah, is that, is that okay for, is it better to do a site visit officially as a group?
It's, having a site visit, a formal warrants, site visit allows us to sort of bring that into testimony.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Can't really talk about it, what, what your observations are there, but you go back and read it into the record.
Yeah.
Um, if you go individually.
Okay, let's do it.
Okay, great. Um.
I would definitely not be able to make that.
Yeah.
So if I'm able to zoom in, I just won't participate in that here.
Um, no, it's not.
Missing the site visit, does it?
That doesn't.
It's, it's not, it's not a hearing on its own, it just, it has to be warned.
Gotcha.
Um, because it's a, a meeting of the Development Review Board.
I'm still probably not gonna make it, but if I can, I'll be able to, okay.
Um, so the other, I guess, the last matter is, um. So Carlton appealed our decision.
Oh, yeah.
Um, which is fine, you know, I figured what's gonna happen.
The other ones we said that was too steep.
Uh, on favor, met.
They took good.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, she was interesting, cause I just saw her sales sign. That's why.
Right, right, yeah.
Anyway, sorry.
Hmm, yeah, I, 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 I can't, I don't know.
No, no, sorry, it was just their personal. Well, they, they, they had a contingent sale.
Yeah.
For that, right?
The diversity portion of that, I would presume, I don't know for a fact.
Yeah, and the appeal, what, what bounty does it go to?
It goes to the environmental court. So with, um, the town is being represented by, I think, S, J, SPJ attorneys out of Burlington are the town attorneys.
Hmm.
Um, there's a statement of questions, if anyone's interested in reading those.
And that, the environmental courts in what uh town?
It's in Monmouth, yeah.
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 And if they, um. It's interesting, we'll see if they. They could, they can, they could withdraw it or abandon it maybe at any time, like, I don't know, if the. They're putting it back on the mark, the owner, that was the matter where they had um someone who was representing the seller.
Yeah.
It was a woman, if I.
Although, oh, yeah, but the, but the people who wanted to buy it, those two were there.
Yes, yes, no, no.
Which was presenting.
And then we had a neighbor also.
And the neighbors, yeah.
So.
And we were like, you already have a development envelope, just use one you already have.
Right, yeah. Right, right, so, I mean, this, the statement of questions is long, I mean, there's ten questions with.